Eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, seven thirty in the Crow Wing County Historic Courthouse. We'll start with roll call.
Pritchett. Beavins.
Here.
Bedeau.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Lambert.
Here.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Here.
Mank.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the right of justice for all.
That brings us to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Beavins, a second by Lambert, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up on the agenda is the consent calendar. Notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Sec.
We have a motion by Beavins and a second by Lambert to adopt the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavins.
Yes.
Bedeau.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to the sixth item on our agenda, which is presentations. Six A is Brainerd Lakes Area Economic Development Corporation presentation. Tyler Glenn.
Good evening, council and mayor. Just wanted to give you guys some updates on, well, my first month on the job as the new executive director of Bladech. So at this point, I've been meeting with all of our board members individually. We held a board meeting last Friday, which was the, involved all of our city and county leaders come and give reports at that meeting. So things went well there. We're just looking at staffing needs and what we feel like we need currently and what we could potentially need moving forward. So we'll continue to address those items as the months move along, but as of right now, I won't be adding any staff for probably another month, maybe two, based on needs. So we'll deal with those as they come up. So our budget was approved, so we do have room in there to make some hires when and if we're needing them. And then also, how we're going to deal with some of our reporting changes. So some of the reporting, trying to be a bit more transparent with some of the reporting. Administrator Bergman and myself will be meeting Thursday of this week to look at some of the reporting that we're currently doing for the city of Brainerd, how we present, what we present. You know, I know that the programs that we've created have allowed us to be a bit more transparent, just in regards to sheer numbers on loans that we're doing, hires that we're working on and making. So that's been good, but it's the other stuff that we want to try and be just more transparent in what we're delivering and how we deliver it. So we'll get to those here shortly and hopefully by the next couple of weeks, we'll have some of those things finalized. The two thousand and nineteen year end reports will be available. I'll have all of those finalized by the next council meeting. So we'll be able to go through and show two thousand and nineteen final numbers. Bladech's annual meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, with registration beginning at seven fifteen a.m. I've elected to move this from a lunch meeting to a breakfast meeting. I feel like we may get a bigger, larger participation at this meeting if it's the first agenda item on people's day. So that is at Arrowwood Lodge. The meeting, registration at seven fifteen, the meeting will begin at eight. We have about ninety minutes for that meeting. The meeting is going to have a very local flavor to it, so we're not bringing in an outside speaker, which we've done in the past. I've elected to bring this back and make it more of a Crow Wing County focused meeting for the first meeting. So hopefully that is accepted with open arms and something we can look at. Yes.
What day again? I'm sorry.
Tuesday, March twenty-fourth. And just a couple of other things quickly here, the unified fund. We did fund one of our loans that we approved in two thousand and nineteen, finally got funded in two thousand and twenty. That was for a bar and restaurant that was up in Jenkins, so that finally did get funded. We have another loan that we approved in two thousand and nineteen that should get funded early here in the spring of two thousand and twenty. I have two loans in process right now with applications on my desk. Both of those are projects that will be using our federal funds, which is very challenging dollars for us to use. So that's a good process, so we should have a meeting here within the next month, I would think, to get through those. And the last thing on my list is just to talk a little bit about Mike Birkenness's key recruitment program. He's successfully already hired five individuals in the first forty-five days of two thousand and twenty, which is pretty darn exciting. And this isn't, he informed me this morning that these aren't holdovers. He didn't hold these over from the two thousand and nineteen just to get them hired now. But what's exciting about this is that he was able to hire an HR director for Anderson Brothers. And then he has two more positions that he will be hiring for CTC. So of these hires, three of these positions will be people that will be housed in the city of Brainerd, which is exciting for us. But you know, when we look at this, he had six job openings at this beginning of the year. He's hired five of them already. And out of that, he had a hundred and thirty-one applications. And so that's a lot of applications, a lot of resumes to film through, to push through. So he's been doing great work with that. The program is working very well and continues to move. So that would be the end of my report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No. Congratulations on the promotion again.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
See you next time.
All right, thanks.
Brings us to six B, Community Development Department presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take an opportunity to come before the council. And with the creation of the Community Development Department in two thousand and nineteen, that effectively consolidated planning, zoning, and building. I thought it'd be prudent to come before the council after our first year and just give a short report about what our two thousand and nineteen looked like. Again, the Community Development Department, we have five staffs, so myself, my building official, building inspector, housing inspector, and a permit tech zoning specialist. We oversee planning and zoning, building inspections, code compliance, rental housing, and I also work closely with Bladech and the city administrator on economic development. First of all, I want to talk about building. I have two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen up here. See a little comparison. I'm going to be focusing mostly on two thousand and nineteen as it's something to talk about. In two thousand and nineteen, the building department issued one thousand twenty-six total building permits with a valuation of ninety-three million four hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Roughly seventy-six million of that was ISD one eighty-one projects, so Harrison Elementary and the high school. So everything else covered roughly seventeen million one hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. If you can look over across eighteen, you'll see eighteen, we were about almost double that at thirty-three million. I did some crunching of numbers, diving into that. Why do we have such a big drop on non-educational or institutional projects? And that was mainly because in two thousand and eighteen, there's about twelve million dollars worth of additional commercial projects that were done. Commercial remodels, commercial additions, the biggest one being the CTC building. That was a huge multi-multi-million dollar project and a few other commercial projects that we had done in eighteen. That's the big effect on that valuation to nineteen. We didn't have those. A lot of those were still going on in nineteen, but when we permit, we permit it at the very beginning of the project. Residential new construction had thirty-five new residential, single-family construction in two thousand and nineteen, two new commercial structures built, four new governmental institutional constructions built, forty-seven residential remodels, thirty-two commercial remodels, six government or institutional remodels. And then we did a lot of, we saw a good amount of continuing with what I would just call residential upkeep with a hundred and sixty roofing permits, thirty-four siding, and seventy-five window permits. Those were our most common permits that we've got. For a total, my staff conducted three thousand eight hundred forty-five building inspections in two thousand and nineteen. So that's kind of the building side snapshot. At code compliance, we continue to get out there, especially in the summer. And in two thousand and nineteen, we issued one thousand three hundred nine total violations. That's just informing someone, hey, you're in violation of some element of the property maintenance code, so roughly about a hundred more than two thousand and eighteen. One thing I want to point out, though, is that we only, of that one thousand three hundred nine, we only issued three hundred eighty citations. And if you break that down, that's only a hundred and six unique citations. So some people got multiple citations for the same issue. So when you take the unique citations and divide that by the total number of violations, we actually had a ninety-two percent compliance rate versus an eighty-six percent compliance rate in two thousand and eighteen. So I see that as improvement. We want to continue, our ultimate goal when it comes to code compliance is that compliance, we're not necessarily looking for the money. We just want to make sure people are complying with the code, keeping our community clean. Another element of that is we did void eighty-eight citations. Those are people that got their violation notice and were issued a citation. But they came to us, they contacted us, said, hey, I'm working on it. Can you give me an extension? I want to handle it. They handled it in a timely manner, and we avoided those citations. Again, just common violations, we see tall grass, garbage, unlicensed vehicles, property identification, and snow clearing.
Question.
Yes, Mr. President.
You didn't list the number of voided citations in two thousand and eighteen. Is that something you started doing new in two thousand and nineteen?
It's something I hadn't, with the change in staff and who was tracking that between eighteen and nineteen, it's something I didn't have ready access to. I couldn't find that. It required more digging.
Okay.
But it is something that we have regularly been doing. Rental housing, another element of the building department. We have roughly, again, these numbers have changed a little bit as rentals come on or rentals come off, but roughly we have stayed around twenty-five hundred rental units. That's across just over a thousand structures. Our rentals are primarily single-family, followed by two-family, and then multifamily. Our multifamily has the most units, but the second few is just a few more structures than our two-family. Rental housing units are currently inspected on a three-year cycle, so they get permitted every year and roughly every three years. They're physically inspected. The reason part of that three-year cycle is due to the fact that we have two thousand, just over twenty-five hundred units that all individually have to be inspected. It's just not something that one staff member can do in a single calendar year. And this is something that the rental housing code is being under review by a committee. And Councilmember Lambert is chairing that committee, and hopefully he should have a draft coming before the council in the coming months. Playing on zoning wide, in two thousand and nineteen, before the planning commission, through the council, we had seven conditional use permits, seven rezonings, five variances. I issued nine zoning compliance letters. Also, we had two ordinance text amendments. Working with my planning intern, on the city's website is we have a vacant parcel map. So if you go on there, you can see kind of all the parcels throughout the community that are buildable and vacant, or I should say, platted and vacant. So if they're unplatted but vacant, they weren't listed. So platted and vacant, nice thing on there. If you hover on them, it'll actually pull up the Crow Wing GIS information. So you can click on that, go to tax information, and figure out information on those parcels.
That's neat.
Conducted a downtown parking study, responded the RFP for the Region Five Children's Museum, and we continue to do work on the Mississippi River front. Just a few other accomplishments I wanted to point out. On July first, the council did adopt the river-to-rail incentives that waived all permit fees for projects under fifty thousand dollars, as well as sack and whack. That was on July one. So between July one and December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen, we waived thirty-three thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents in permits.
How many projects was that?
I want to say it's a couple dozen. So one of the things I can also produce a report for the council is my staff has started to track that in the permit. So if it is in the river-to-rail section, it's actually pulled out separate than everything else. So if it's like a commercial remodel, in our reporting, it says commercial remodel, and there's a separate section for commercial remodels within the river rail or residential, things like that. So we actually pull them out separately.
Good, that's going to be information we're going to want to see to make decisions in the future. Are people pulling permits knowing that they're getting free sack and whack or free permit?
More are. We actually had, I was contacted by a real estate agent near the end of last year, who said, they actually didn't know about the river-to-rail, but their client said they wanted to move their business from Baxter to Brainerd, and they needed to be on the east side of the river because then permits were free. So the communication.
We're starting to hear about it.
Yes, people are starting to hear about it, and I believe it is starting to have an effect. And then the final thing was just, we adopted, the council adopted the comprehensive plan in October, after roughly two years' worth of work. And now the city council is in the, oh, not city council, the planning commission is in the process of starting implementation of that plan. With that, any questions?
Well, this was a great presentation. I mean, being a new department, really a restructured department, as it were, you coming on board, it's cool that you could provide.
And I would like to come before the council. My intention is to come before the council, you know, maybe twice a year, once a year, just to give that update of here we are, so you kind of understand what's going on around the community from a planning and zoning and building perspective.
Excellent. Any questions?
I just have a question. David, I'm going back on the building. Is this pretty much an average, a normal for us to have this type of permits per year?
Over the last ten years, these residential new constructions are unheard of. These are the two highest years in the last decade.
Yeah, these are the last two highest years and biggest things coming from this. This is mostly covered through North Town and Brainerd Oaks. So that's where the vast majority, I would probably say ninety percent of these structures are either Brainerd Oaks or North Town.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thanks a lot, David.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is seven, Council Committee Reports. We'll start with the Personnel and Finance Committee. Alderman Bedeau.
Oh, my gosh, we are first. All right, so we have five items on our agenda, the first of which is the approval of bills contingent upon the approval of change orders one and two for improvements one, excuse me, nineteen oh-nine and nineteen oh-two. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the bills contingent upon a change order approval from Safety and Public Works. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavins.
Yes.
Bedeau.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries.
All right, so we're on item number two, and we are off script, so you should have gotten a memo, or excuse me, an email that the memo for the next item was incorrect. So we have a little change in that there. The main reason being that our first motion out of committee is to accept the community officer Lucas Carita Katira resignation with regret.
Second.
We have a motion to accept with regret the resignation of a community service officer. Any discussion?
Hopefully I said his name right once.
Close?
Yes.
Right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
All right, so the second motion coming out of committee is to authorize conditional job offers to Cole Toma and Mason Barton for the part-time positions of community service officer with starting dates of February nineteenth or shortly thereafter, at a starting wage of eleven thirty-three per hour, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the hirings. Is there any discussion?
So just a small bit of information. Historically, the police department is four or five CSOs, but we budget based off of hours, not by position. So this brings us up to where the department feels we should be.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
All right, so the next item is the state delegation agreement and building official position. This is a continuation from a discussion that we had last round. The motion number one coming out of committee is to amend the building official job description as recommended, making the possession of the delegation agreement as a desirable rather than a minimum qualification, and authorize staff to post building official position and conduct hiring process as outlined by city policy, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to post the position, change the position.
Yep, so we combined, if you're looking in the packet, we combined the two there, which we at PNF like to do, mainly just to allow for discussion on both at the same time. This is a continuation of what we talked about before, where we're in a position now where we need to have a building official that's holding the delegation with the state. We're in need of a new building official, and we need options. So this is basically to give us some options moving forward. Staff can then put it out, see if we get any people posting for it, and then we can have some options moving forward.
Okay, so back to the motion. Did your motion include all three of these?
It just contains.
Just the top two regarding the position of the building official.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
All right, and the next motion on this item is to direct staff to develop and distribute a request for proposal for state delegation agreement services, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So this is the second part of this, in that by making it a desired instead of a minimum qualification, if we were to get a candidate that perhaps meets the requirements but does not have the delegation, we would then need to have some kind of service agreement with an outside entity. This way, we can allow staff to go out, get requests for proposal on it, and then we can, you know, take all of the factors into account and see what the best route moving forward is.
All right, and it's my understanding that we need somebody on staff or a consultant to hold this state delegation agreement. So when we're inspecting, or we can inspect, state licensed facilities and therefore collect the building permit fees of anything that's state licensed, like a school, a hospital, anything like that.
Exactly.
Holding this delegation agreement or having a consultant who holds it for us is a valuable situation right now in the midst of these school projects.
Yep, two parts, going back to the previous agenda that we had last meeting. Darren is now the interim building official. What he needs is four years of state projects. He has about two years of state projects. And when we're looking at things, they said, basically, twenty twenty-two is when most of these school projects will be falling off. So we're probably looking at around two years, but we want to leave the options open, figure out what everything is, and then come back.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to direct staff to develop and distribute a request for proposal for state delegation agreement services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
All right, our next item is the federal recreational trail and local trail connection grants. And the first motion coming out of committee is to approve staff's request to submit a grant request for a hundred fifty thousand dollars through the federal recreational trail grant to be used towards the development of Mississippi Landing Trailhead and adopt the attached resolution supporting the grant, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So you're going to have two motions here. They're for two separate grants. Both are for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and both require a twenty-five percent local match. Now, lucky for us, we did some due diligence, and we found that we can apply for both of these using the same twenty-five percent match. So as you look at the bottom there, your total would be thirty-seven thousand five hundred. And upon first look, you'd think, well, we got to double that because we're probably looking at two of them here. But really, the same amount can be used for both. Chances are, we will not get both, but we hope to be able to apply for both of them.
Good explanation. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. This is just the federal recreational trail.
Just the federal recreational.
Okay, just recommended action one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it is a resolution.
Oh, well, then, we won't do a voice vote. Let's have some fun and do a roll call.
Real stuff.
All right. Beavins.
Yes.
Bedeau.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
All right, now, the second motion, you're going to have to get out your bifocals to try and find the difference between the two. But it is to approve staff's request to submit a grant request for a hundred fifty thousand dollars through the local trail connection grant to be used towards the development of the Mississippi Landing Trailhead and adopt the attached resolution supporting the grant, and I so move.
I think you're, we have a motion.
Second.
I think your emphasis on the word local kind of gave it away.
I hope you caught it.
Any other discussion or same?
So the only other discussion I should add is that we did designate a hundred thousand dollars in the capital fund for two thousand and twenty to be used in matching funds for the riverfront. So this is money that we did designate in our budget.
It's in the budget. It's already in the capital fund. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Beavins.
Yes.
Bedeau.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
All right, and we are on a roll. So the last item is the review of the fund balance policy. And the motion is to approve the fund balance policy with the changes as presented, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So there's a really nice memo drafted here by Connie that talks about the reasons for making the changes here. The main reason for this is to change the unassigned fund balance to thirty-five to fifty percent of next year's budgeted operations expenditures. As opposed to looking back, we're then going to be looking forward, and it's just a little bit of a change in policy from that. In doing so, Connie went back and tried to clean up some stuff. The document as presented was from two thousand and nine, so just some things that need to be cleaned up. Cleaned it up. I think I said that downstairs, too, didn't I?
Clean that up.
Cleaned it up, and she did run it by the auditors, and they give her a thumbs up, so.
Excellent. I have a question of Connie. Going from current year operating expenditures to subsequent, what does that change? Right now, we're at like forty-one percent. Where would we be at?
I apologize. I should have calculated that, but I did not. So I apologize for that. But this is something that we talked about when we were doing our audit presentation last year, that really the fund balance at the end of the year needs to get you through the first six months. So what we have at December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, needs to get us through until June, July of two thousand and twenty. And so that was what I was going off of. I failed to calculate the amount.
Right, and we're currently, as we're going to be going out for bonding, we're currently within our fund balance policy of thirty-five to fifty percent.
I would think that we would be.
So we're changing this, and our current year budget is three hundred, four hundred, six hundred thousand dollars higher than last year. So it's going to change, and our percentage is going to lower, and we don't know if it's going to be thirty-five percent.
I failed to calculate that. I apologize.
I'm going to vote no, just because since we're going out for a large bond issuance this year, I want to make sure our financials look as strong as possible. I would hate to change our policies to make our financials look weaker than they really are. So maybe bring it back next time with those numbers, so we can ensure we are at least at thirty-five percent of current year fund balance.
The thing is, I won't know what our fund balance is yet either, at December two thousand and nineteen yet either. So really, we won't have that information until later on, when the audit's complete.
Yeah, but you could hopefully get within a couple percent, and if we're like, it'll be between thirty-four and thirty-six, that worries me. If we're between thirty-eight and thirty-nine, I feel comfortable with that, right? Is there any other discussion?
I can't resist. I'm going to vote in favor of it because I don't think, I don't think what you're, I get what you're asking for as far as following our policy, but it really doesn't change what really is. Our fund balance is what it really is. This isn't changing the fund balance. It's just saying to meet our goals, we're going to look ahead instead of looking back. And I understand what you're saying. It looks better stating it one way, but it doesn't change what the balance is. And I think it's best to start moving forward and looking ahead, so we can make our fund balance where it's supposed to be, rather than not doing that because it makes us look better for borrowing today.
I agree with your opinion that we should be doing it, and I agree with the change. I'm concerned that they, the bond people, look at our policies and they look at if we are following our own policies. And then they use that to determine an interest rate and how much they will charge us interest.
All right.
And if we're not following our policies, it may, maybe it's only a hundredth of a percentage, but it's costing us money that we could prevent, potentially.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Aye. Motion carries.
End of report.
End of report. Thank you, Alderman Bedeau. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the Safety and Public Works Agenda. Alderman Beavins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have five agenda items. The first one will seem very familiar, and that's improvements sixteen oh-nine and nineteen oh-seven, the Buffalo Hills Lane and Mississippi Drive reconstruction, which we just approved. The payment on the.
The payment on the change orders and the motion is to approve the change orders themselves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the aforementioned change orders. Any discussion? Hearing none, will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is the Annaback Street Stormwater Pond Maintenance Agreement. The motion is to approve the attached agreement and authorize the proper signatures on the cross-jurisdictional maintenance agreement. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just, just for, you know, if you haven't read the packet and for those of us that are watching at home, it, it basically is our agreement to maintain or pay for 70% of the Corwin County Stormwater Pond based on that's what we put into the pond is about 70% of the, of the runoff.
Seems fair. Any discussion? Hearing none, will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three is the event street closure application for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, approve the attached application under the condition that the applicant add additional barricades to the east of the Laurel Street Parking Lot entrance on Laurel Street and that the applicant request traffic control one week prior to the event so that it may be scheduled accordingly. Chief McQuiston has indicated this event will be scheduled and they will have CSOs available to assist in traffic control. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the St. Patrick's Day Parade application with contingencies. Any discussion?
I will be abstaining as my name is on the application.
Alderman Bedeau is abstaining from the vote. His name is on the application. Any other discussion? Hearing none, will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous with one abstention. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four is Transit Bus 118 disposal. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation, authorizing disposal of Transit Bus 118 and further to accept the payment of $13,676 from the insurance to the responsible party to be put towards the local 20% share of a new bus. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to dispose of Transit Bus 118. Any discussion? I'll just say, I, I was sitting in on the committee meeting. I think this was our oldest bus that we were planning on replacing anyway. And there were no riders when it got in an accident and nobody got hurt. And so it was really a decent timing for everything.
Perfect timing. It was not a decent timing as my son was late for school. True story, I had to call in.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And our last agenda item is to set the public hearing for the MS4 public hearing for April 6, 2020 at the regular city, scheduled city council meeting. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the MS4 annual update and public hearing. Any discussion?
Just that, you know, everybody wants more, more sewer videos.
I may sit in on that one again.
We may have to, we may have to limit the public.
They get excited.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
End of report, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bevins. This brings us to item number eight, unfinished business. Call for applicants. Mayor Menck?
Yes, at this time, I'm asking for applicants for various city committees. Terms expire December 31st of the same year. Cable TV Advisory Committee, two terms expiring in 2021 and two terms expiring in 2022. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring in 2020, one term expiring in 2021, one term expiring in 2022 and one term expiring in 2023. Also, I would ask for someone to come to the EDA meetings. Term is to expire September 7th of the year because that is when the program started. The term is expiring on September 7th of 2020.
Thank you, Mayor Menck. I also have one, one recommendation to make and that is we need one person to serve on our Planning and Zoning Commission and help us implement our new comprehensive plan. So fill out your application at City Hall. And in other committee business, Alderman Bedeau?
Yeah, we're still looking for more members for the Water Tower Committee, just to fill things out for the upcoming year. I was asked to let people know that we are meeting the third Wednesday of each month and we are currently at the Fire Hall in the training room. So if you're looking for us, that's where we are. Six o'clock. I did not say that. We're just there all the time. Just all the time.
Camp out.
Six o'clock.
All right, thank you, Alderman Bedeau. That brings us to nine, new business, law enforcement mutual aid agreements. Call on the Police Chief McQuiston.
Thank you. I don't know if you had a chance to look over the agreement at all or the resolution. It's a pretty standard agreement. Primarily needed to be updated because there was a change in the sheriff after the election and one of the police chiefs. So it was a little outdated, needed these new updated signatures. It kind of goes through what long-term mutual aid is and what short-term is and who can request it and for how long and when you can tell them they're done. And it's a lot of liability coverage and issues like that. I did ship it off to Joe. We had some discussion about it. And I'll answer any questions if you have regarding it.
Does anybody have questions on the agreement? No questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Bevins, a second by Stunek to adopt the attached resolution. Any discussion?
By roll call.
Good discussion point. And we'll vote.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bedeau?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is item number 10, public forum. Right now, we have time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. Anybody here to speak in the public forum? Anybody here to speak in the public forum? Anybody here to speak in the public forum? Seeing nobody rise, we'll move on. Well, Teresa lives in town, she could always come up. 11, staff reports. 11A, city administrator report on your update.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Attached to your, in your packet is my memo. I just want to draw a couple of things to your attention. First of all, there's some great upcoming trainings. One is elected official, elected leaders institute. This is advanced program. So this is actually for elected officials who have been in office for a while. It is the League of Minnesota Cities that's hosting it and it's being held right here in our backyard. I did attach some information on that. If anybody is interested in attending, I would be happy to help get you registered. That is on February 28th and 29th, I believe. The other is the Legislative Conference. Again, the League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Conference. That will be on March 18th and 19th. I've also included information in your packet on the Legislative Conference. Again, would encourage you to attend if you're able to. It's a great time to connect with our lawmakers and we'll be setting up appointments with Representative Heinzman and Senator Rood, so.
And I believe you told me last week that we do budget money for council training.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And the city does pay for any registration to these, these trainings.
So the council has $3,000 in a line item budget for training. The other thing that I, I'd like to draw to your attention is just the, the sale of the Memorial Park Parking Lot. I continue to work with the landowner, Brainerd Land LLC. He has referred the purchase agreement to his attorney and his attorney will be working directly with our attorney. I hope to have this on the March, March 2nd agenda, but I continue to ask and see if this is something he's ready to have on the next agenda. He was uncertain whether or not it would be ready for March 2nd.
I, I have a question and maybe it's a question of Joe. So we submitted an offer to purchase land. What is there to work out between his attorney and our attorney? Wouldn't it be they either accept the offer or they submit a counter offer?
Yeah, Mary, council is generally correct. They, there'll be some back and forth. There may just be some questions about what the terms mean in terms of what the thought process is on our side and so forth. It's, it's that kind of discussion. The land deals too, they might be thrown in some additional terms about closing costs or that kind of stuff, the gritty details sorts of things. But yeah, in general, it's a, either take what we ask, what we offer or don't. And if you don't want it, then come back with whatever your terms are.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my report, Mr. President, unless there are any questions of me.
Any questions with the administrator? Seeing none, I'll open it up for other staff reports. Any, Corky, you have one? Yeah, come on up.
I just want to give the council an opportunity to maybe have some dialogue after the CARE-11 news report on the untested sexual assault kits. Was really frustrated when I saw this story and when I learned about it late in the afternoon of the day that it was going to air for probably two primary reasons. Number one, I really considered that old news. CNN and The Star and Tribune had made data requests to our agencies in 2017 and 2018. Consequently, the legislature reacted to this. They changed the laws. We updated our policy. The Post Board sent out a new model policy. All those changes occurred in 2018. They were enacted in 2019. So we updated our department policy. Our policy actually took effect in April of 2019. And I thought the state as a whole had recovered from this. So for them to kind of drag up this, what I was considered old news. And the second part, I think, where I really became even more frustrated is sexual assaults are really sensitive, difficult investigations. And they're also grossly under-reported. And so my problem is, in airing a story like this, is that I think it damages the community's confidence in our agency. And with that damage, I'm concerned that victims would not come forward now because they think that we're not testing these kits. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think the state as a whole and numerous law enforcement agencies recognize the value of sending in untested kits for, to add to the, the state's DNA database so that unknown offenders, I'm going to give you an example. Not a sexual assault kit, but a suspect that we got a search warrant for that was in custody here, his DNA didn't match the DNA in our sexual assault kit. He was two suspects that were thought to have raped a gal. And our investigators get a search warrant. They obtained his DNA. His DNA and the other person's DNA didn't match the DNA in the kit, but it did match an unknown sexual assault that occurred in 2016 in St. Paul. So, you know, we've recognized this and we had made the changes and we're doing this. So for this to be brought up, and if you look at the data that they made reference to, all of it was nearly five to 11 years old. So it was before all these changes took place. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand, know that we made the changes in policy and practice and, and we do the, once the legislature increased the funding, the BCA superintendent came to our Region Five Chiefs meeting, talked about how they were in the process of adding new laboratory technicians, talked about the struggles like we all face with hiring people that, you know, they, they needed to find people and get them hired. And then they clearly outlined and sent communications to the whole state on the process of sending in waves of these untested kits because they obviously could not take all the untested kits that all the agencies across the state have. So we've really worked through all that. So for this report to come out now, I felt was really untimely and I think it was misrepresentative. And the other part, I have sympathy for the victim that they interviewed. And that case, however, testing the kit in that would have had no bearing on the outcome of her case. She received a lengthy letter from one of the assistant county attorneys about why they couldn't charge that case out and it was declined prosecution. And none of that rationale had anything to do with the kit not being tested. Testing the kit from that particular case would have had no impact in the outcome of it. The only thing that that would have maybe done was if that person was involved in it as an unknown suspect in, in a case somewhere else in the state. So I gladly enter, or answer any questions if.
I, I have a couple of questions. So you've updated your policies?
Yep.
State laws have been changed?
Yes, they have.
Is it within your department's policies and within state law to allow you to destroy untested rape kits?
It still technically is, if you look at that section of the law I highlighted, it, it is allowable. And I think they must have left that for, assuming that there might not be the capacity for the lab. Or like I can tell you, there's probably a couple of kits that would be a total waste of their time because there's no evidence in there. Once the kits were processed and we received them and further investigation and consulting with the medical professionals that conducted the, and these, and other information throughout the case. I'll give you, the example where those cases happen is people become impaired or intoxicated or from drugs or alcohol and don't remember what happened to them. They'll sometimes go get these kits because they're not sure. And then through the course of all that, find out the course of all that, find out there's absolutely no evidence that a sexual assault occurred. Those kits maybe would be the ones that they're still trying to leave, you know, you, the statute clearly says that unless, um, law enforcement agencies deem the results of the kits would not add evidentiary value to the case. But it does come with that, if that is the choice, and the kit's not submitted during this time, we have to have consultation with our county attorney and state the reasons why the kit was not submitted. So that's kind of at least a balance and check on that, but I can tell you with a lot of confidence, all ours are getting sent in now.
Is it in your policies that all are tested?
No, because the one thing with the policy is, we use the model policy from the post board, and it makes specific reference to the statute, and the only reason why I would say no, we don't say that, is we want to follow the statute, and it's easier if the statute changes, that then we don't have to change our policy again. We just say, our policy follows what the statute says.
The statute, to me, seems like a bare minimum legal requirement.
You're right.
And I, I think the city of Brainerd is, is better than the bare minimum, and I, I think our policies should be reflected to show that we are going to test every kit.
And, and we are. We, we, since the change has come forward, we do send them all in. I think it probably too allowed for some time for the lab to get caught up, so that they could accept them all. I can't imagine hardly any agencies that aren't sending them all in now.
Any other questions? Thanks for bringing it up, Corky.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Just have a couple items. So, uh, you'll recall that we applied for a Safe Routes to School engineering grant. Uh, we were awarded the, the maximum for the three schools in that, so we'll be working with, uh, MINDOT's consultant, SRF Consulting, the school district, and the city will be working together to complete that study, um, with the main focus of, obviously Harrison being number one, Lowell and Riverside being the three schools that'll be studied. Um, we did, uh, I presented out on our Transportation Alternatives application for the Twenty-Eighth Street Trail Connection at our Region Five Transportation Advisory Council Meeting on, I think it was last week. Um, we were awarded the, uh, the ten regional significance points, so our application will now go down to the area transportation, the ATP, uh, partnership, and they will, um, award the grants based on the highest-scoring applications, so that ten points goes a long ways into furthering our application.
Is, is there only one ten-point application?
Yep, there's one ten and one five. So last year, we were awarded the five, Little Falls was awarded the ten. We would have been, um, awarded funding last year if we were awarded the ten, so we were awarded that full ten points this year. Um, and then I did have a, set up a meeting with the DNR after we changed our alignment for the Cayana Trail at the last meeting. Um, the DNR said that we're in a good spot, and we're gonna have a, um, a joint meeting with, um, MINDOT, the DNR, and the city to discuss not only the trail segment, but the, um, how we get it across two-ten, um, in conjunction with the twenty-twenty-five, uh, reconstruct of Highway two-ten. So that joint meeting is next week. So we're in a good spot in that one, too. Um, there's some possibility that we could get that deadline extended, also from twenty-twenty-one out further, so we can kind of conglomerate all those projects together, so.
Excellent, back to the Safe Routes to Schools, we have some street projects in southeast on the twenty-twenty-one five-year plan, and of those are Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, which are the two streets that go right by Harrison north-south. Are we gonna be, is it possible that we may be putting sidewalks in, in twenty-twenty-one?
So right now, if we were to apply for Safe Routes to School funding, they get funded, I think, is it five years in advance, Ted?
Four, I believe.
Four years in advance, and so basically, this year's TA funding, or Safe Routes to School, was for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Now, we can always advance construct those projects, which is what we've elected to do numerous times, so you'll recall Garfield Safe Routes, uh, Phase Two, uh, was funded by, I believe, for twenty-twenty, and Phase Three for twenty-twenty-one. We constructed both of those in twenty nineteen, and we received the funding, and just advancing those funds basically forward, um, and receiving a payment for those. But, so there is still the opportunity, um, we would have to apply in twenty-twenty-one, um, but it would be, um, if we wanted to apply for Safe Routes funding, the study hopefully would be completed, and we would try to apply for those funds, um, once we get the study back, and which projects are the most feasible. Otherwise, we can always fund it with local funds too, if we're doing those streets at that time. But obviously, the Safe Routes program is something we've been very successful in the past, it's just the timing aspect is four years later.
Yeah, given this timing aspect, and knowing that we can advance funds, would it be possible that we have Safe Routes to School sidewalks on Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street next summer?
No, I doubt it. Not Safe Routes to School funded, no.
So we'd have to find alternate funding if we're gonna do that?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks, Paul.
Yep.
Any other staff reports? Seeing none, we'll go to Mayor Menck.
At this time, I'm gonna ask Administrator Bergman to distribute a letter, and I'm going to read the letter into the record.
Will you read it into the microphone, Ed?
Thank you. Uh, dated February eighteenth, two twenty, it has been my pleasure to serve on various commissions, authorities, and other city-sponsored entities in the city of Brainerd since nineteen eighty-seven, January first of nineteen eighty-seven, actually. This would include being mayor for the last four and a third years. This represents one-third of a century. As a wise person once said, there are only so many minutes in an hour, so many hours in a day, so many days in a month, so many months in a year, and only so many years in a lifetime. With that in mind, I hereby am informing the Brainerd City Council that I am stepping down from the position of mayor of Brainerd on March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Timing of this will allow the city council to work out the process to appoint an interim mayor to serve until January twenty-twenty-one. It will also allow any individual in the city of Brainerd time to consider filing for the office during the filing period of May nineteenth to June second for the primary and the November elections. I would like to thank the city of Brainerd, its leaders, Brainerd citizens, and the entire Brainerd Lakes area for their support. Signed Edwin L. Menck, Mayor of City of Brainerd. Thank you.
Wow. That brings us to the next item, is Kelly Beavens, council member report?
Nothing to add, sir.
Uh, I, I, from the HRA, this is a shock, but from the HRA, we did get fifteen applications for our executive director position, and after reviewing the candidate pool, we decided to put a pause on it, pump the brakes, and we're gonna kind of relook at the position, probably post it again in a few months, so we're gonna be without an executive director there for, for a while yet.
I'd like to express sympathy to Jeff Halsetter and his family, um, he was a retired engineer for the city of Brainerd for a number of years. Thank you.
Nothing to add.
I'd just like to thank everybody for my last three weeks, and sorry I was gone, but I had to be gone.
Good to have you back.
Uh, so seeing as it was one of the agenda items tonight, I, I might as well just announce that, uh, I have been selected to be the Director of Brainerd Community Action, and so, uh, I believe we have a press release that, that's supposedly out there.
Probably your job to write it.
Well, it's been, it's been, it's been released, I don't know what happened with it.
Under advisement.
It's under advisement. Uh, but since I, there's an application on tonight's agenda that is filled out through that, um, for myself and for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, I might as well just announce that. It's a, a great opportunity for me to, uh, continue the work that we do here from a different side of things, you know, from the city's aspect, we can do so much, but there's so many things that I want to do for the community, um, that this will help me, uh, group with other individuals. So it's a great, great organization, and I'm excited, and I know they're excited, so.
Can we cut the fireworks funds now? All right. Okay, anything else to come up? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three C three, to consider counteroffers for the purchase of property at various streets on, in and around Fourth Street Northwest. We have a motion?
Say it.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll take a two-minute break, and then go into closed session. Three-minute break, closed session.
I haven't seen it.
I read it, but I haven't seen it.
I don't know if it was, yeah, okay, so you did get it?
Well.